Glad to see you all here. This is a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, March 6th. Twenty twenty-four, it's 6:00 PM. Call meeting to order. And note that all members of council are present with the exception of Mayor Protem Smith. Which is, he's expected shortly. Right, Councilmember Emilio, will you give us a pledge? All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda. And noting that the closed session item fifteen A. Should begin no later than eight PM.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next order of business is a presentation by the Rotary Club. Welcome, everybody.
Just a little bit by ear. Good evening, members of the council staff. My name is Alex Lorca with Pacific Grove Rotary. It's my distinct pleasure to be here. Tonight, not only as someone who grew up here, but with children in the local schools and resident of Candy Cane Lane. We have with us Jeannie Byrne, Julie Roth, Jiva Art. Arcannon, Arlene Hardenstein. And because this is Jeannie's sort of thing, I'll let her do the actual presentation.
But I have the.
He's got the money. Well, I think as all of you know, this auto rally was created to fund the youth center. And it continues to be a major source of funding for the youth center. So we are very pleased tonight. To present the city with $10,000.
We need to give this to Dan.
Always wanted a big check.
I would just like to say thank you to the Pacific Grove Rotary. Every year they run this car event downtown. And they donate to the youth center and it goes to the great causes of we put heaters in the youth center. We've done other repairs there. It helps us run our youth programs at the youth center. And we wouldn't be able to function our youth center and our recreation programs without donations like this. So I just really want to say thank you on. The behalf of the city and the recreation department to the Rotary Club. Again, thank you very much.
And I promise this next, next book will be worth your while as well, too. We also have an additional check in the amount of $750 for the PG. Children's library also. Lynn Pagnell in the, in the, in the, in the audience, it's apropos, but anyway, I'll, I'll hand this off to Dan. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Just wanted to take one moment and thank the city for the support you give us with the auto rally. We couldn't do it without the public works guys helping us out. So thank you.
All right, now moving on to council and staff announcements. Mr. Pirik, any announcements?
Mr. Pearl. Yes, I have two announcements this evening. The first is many of you know, the grill at the Lover's Point Grill closed recently. And that was following a lease that expired in the, at the end of December. We were still having conversations when the business owner made a business decision and decided to vacate the property. We, I want you to know that we are at this point soliciting interest. From various parties that might be interested in becoming a concessionaire down there. We will be issuing an RFP within the next couple of weeks. And any of the interested parties should contact either myself or administrative services director. Tori Hannah. And so that's the first announcement. The other announcement I just wanted to make is, is once again, I wanted to thank the council and. Those that were in attendance last week as we did our budget workshop. It's, it's very much appreciated. We took notes as to what the various council members wanted. Us to review as a part of the budget and we'll certainly do that. I know that the. Pool was a, a goal that was stated by both council members and. Members of the public at large and we've been, I've been discussing plans for the summer. With, with the director of public works and it appears as if we're going to have the pool open. Longer and for the season as well as to be. Presenting programs, both free swim as well as instruction. So we're going to be balancing the two. Obviously, we're still in the, in, in the works of. Developing those plans. Once the schedule is firmed up, I'll send that all out to you and I'll also include it in the, in the manager's letter. And one of the, one of the items of progress we're making is that. We've identified somebody that will actually be able to certify low lifeguards. So that should, should be a big help and we've already been out there recruiting. So. That's what my announcements are tonight.
Council announcements, Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are expecting our annual pupping season to happen pretty soon. I just wanted to do a shout out to Public Works for the beautiful signs they put out for us, asking. To help us keep it quiet over there for our pregnant moms now and our seal pups to come. So if you want to see our seals and the adorable signs, check out Hopkins. Thank you.
Councilmember Beck.
To thank our residents of Pacific Grove, you know, growing up here, there was a tremendous amount of support for our youth. I grew up at Caladonia Park, just a few blocks from Mr. Stillwell. He was very instrumental in our community as well, Charlene Howell Lowery. And I just want to thank our residents for reaching out to me, whether it be through cards or emails in support of me. And also if you continue your prayers for our family, thank you.
Got an announcement for those that are interested in, and. Cleaning our air, the Monterey Bay Air Resources District has two incentive programs. One is landscape equipment exchange program where you exchange your, your gasoline. Powered devices for electric or battery and a wood stove change out program. And so there's some serious dollars here, hundreds to thousands, a few thousand dollars. So if you're ever considering it, please check it out. Embard Monterey Bay Air Resources District, or just send me an email and I'll point you in the right direction. And with that, we're on to general public comment. Glad to see you here, Mr. Stillwell.
Thanks for talking about the pool. I heard a little bit. My wife was telling me. I came good. I'd like to see it open. I'm sorry. The pool was fixed up for the children. Not my children, all of the children. They're all mine. They're all mine. And I'd like to see it open and you kind of, I think, said that. But I came because I thought they were going to try and close it. Don't do that. We take everything away from the kids. The generation doesn't seem to have grown up. They, they don't want to give anything back. I'm sorry. But anyway, I just want to give my. Whatever I have. I used to be listened to years ago. I'm just lucky, I guess, that I'm still here. But it makes me mad when I hear different things going this way and no, no ballgame or no this, no that. It's all the kids. I don't hear you taking anything away from you people. Nothing. It's the kids you're taking it away from. It's no good. The kids are yours. What the hell's wrong with you people? They're yours. They will be sitting here 20 years from now. I hope. But anyway, she said they're working on the pool. That's good. Just. Just think about the kids when you talk about closing it. I don't care if you have lifeguards. Hell, more can go down there and sit on the beach and be a lifeguard. So. I thank you.
Linda Pagnell of Pacific Grove. I just wanted to let you all know, if you didn't know, that Mr. Stillwell supported the rebuilding of the pool with a $100,000 donation. This is. It's really comes from his heart. And I believe that our village is one of the best villages to raise children in and, and we really appreciate your attention.
Thank you. And I'll just add, I was, it was a great community effort or fundraising for the pool. And without Mr. Stillwell's donation, it probably wouldn't be in operation. On today and the official name and as part of the fundraising effort, we named the pool or council named the pool, Richard Stillwell. Lover's Point Pool, so. Thank you. All right, Stillwell. Thank you for correcting me. Is there any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for being here and thank you for serving the community. I want to bring up a topic which I brought up many times before. And that's this absurd state housing mandate, which I find the community by and large. Pretty much ignorant of that there is even, that there is even a state mandate, let alone the details or how the council has been responding to it. I must ask you, do you like Pacific Grove, the way it is? The community, the architecture, the layout, the streets, the schools, the administration, the city council and so forth. I, I do. I like living here. I think it's a nice place. I moved here. I could have moved to other places. I couldn't afford Pebble Beach. I couldn't afford. Park Avenue, Hollywood, places like that, but I could afford Pacific Grove and I still can. That's why I'm still here. So I like the town. I think most people like the town, including yourselves. So why are we letting the state mandate? A radical change to the quality of life in our community. Pacific Grove does not need 1,125 new housing units of all costs. Of all rents, of all property values. We were told for years, we don't have enough water, our schools, the roads, the parking, this and that. We want to keep it under control. And now we let Sacramento State Democrat Legislature Senate and Democrat Governor sign this mandate to shove. A project like this down our throats. I'm appalled. I'm upset. I keep talking about this only because when I see people I know and I ask them about it, they don't know anything about it. Oh, don't worry about that. That'll never happen. Even a person running for state, for county supervisor. At a little get together we had down at the church on Central Avenue a couple of weeks ago, said, oh, you don't have to worry about that. There's not enough water. Nothing's gonna ever happen. Then I see the same person on TV saying, I'm for affordable housing. Well, what, you know, I mean, let's take a look at the definition of affordable housing. It sounds like a great idea. But I don't think it's going to be that much less than what people are paying now. And if the people who are living in rental units here now. Move into the so-called affordable housing, who's going to take their place? The landlord's going to be happy. Oh, we lost all our tenants. They moved into affordable housing. You know who's going to move into these 1,125 units? It's going to be the same people you see on not mainstream TV. The migrants coming across the border are going to take up a large percentage of that. Just like they are in Chicago, Denver, Phoenix, Kansas City and New York and et cetera. And if you're not aware of that, you should be looking at the internet and searching that out. These cities are overrun. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please, we have some empty seats here in the front.
I'm here today. My name's Peter and thank you for listening to me. I'm here about a parking ticket. I realize this isn't the venue where you guys deal with it, but I think you need to be aware of how parking enforcement acts in this town. I believe in something called community enforcement. You can do a lot with interacting with the public and. Proactively informing someone in a pleasant way on how maybe what they're doing is incorrect or wrong. I happen to have a big truck which I use to pull my tractor and dump trailer in. I, I'm up and down the West Coast, but my family's been here for over 50 years in PG and. I can't park my pickup truck and it's a conventional pickup truck. It's not jacked up, you know, all that kind of stuff. It's a crew cab long bed and I have a couple photographs I'd like to share with you. In reference to this.
I got to the clerk.
I parked my vehicle in front of Chase Bank. Okay, downtown Pacific Grove. One tire was up and over the curb. If I park my truck where no tire is over the curb. I stick out into the traffic lane. If we, the photographs that I'm sharing with you folks show. How wide open the sidewalk is by Chase Bank. But if you go to the next block over and I realize the city council is dealing with this right now. In front of, is it Victoria Corner, the, the restaurant there, they're redoing the sidewalk and the eating areas. Right now it's less than six feet wide. And if you're a woman wearing, correction, if you're an individual wearing high heels and you're going to walk through there, you could probably lose the heel of your shoe because you have to walk over the, the metal grate. That's around the tree. So. I think the ticket was wrong. I have to go through this laborious process over it. The individual that writes these tickets, they need to realize there's other ways in, in doing something. A warning would have been appropriate. If when the photos get to you, take a look at the, the truck in front of Chase Bank. Violation. Parking on the sidewalk. I laugh. I mean, I'm sorry. It's unreasonable. And in my experience and when I've dealt with the public, I've done community enforcement and I think we need to look at that as a viable option here in PG. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor City Council, my name is Mike Gibbs. I'm on the DDC. I'm speaking as a private citizen. First of all, tomorrow night, there is a. From five to seven, a, a reception. The chamber is hosting a Trotter art gallery right across the street. If you haven't been in Trotters, it's like a museum. It's just a fantastic, he does a fantastic job. He's one of the better art dealers I've ever been in. So five to seven tomorrow night. I'm here to talk about the homelessness, drug addiction and theft, theft reduction act. Some people call it fix forty-seven. If you know forty-seven, it was passed in 2014. It, it made certain crimes theft under $950. It took it from being a felony to a misdemeanor. These misdemeanors can be strung together in the old days and you could charge. The criminal with a combined. Load of these. Of these arrests, but the way it is now, each misdemeanor is considered separately. They're not strung together. So the crooks are out in, you know, a couple hours and they're doing the same thing a little bit later. So this homelessness, drug addiction and theft reduction act. Doesn't overturn forty-seven. It just corrects a couple of things. It corrects the misdemeanor and it also makes easier for. People who are stealing because they have a drug addiction. It helps get them into treatment. There's a lot of misinformation. But there, it, it really helps this and gets them into longer term treatment. The Monterey County DA is in favor of this. Most of the DAs in California are in favor of this act. Our petitions will be going around. I sent most of you emails. We'll find out where the, we're trying to get it here in Pacific Grove. I'll let people know where they can sign it. But. You know. We're really seeing a little bit more crime. I live in the Washington Park area. Over the past three weeks, there have been a rash of car break-ins. Within about a block, block and a half of Washington Park, 200 block of Alder, 200 block of Walnut, 200 block of Locusts. In a crime that horrible crime happened a day or so ago in King City where people were killed. Number of people were shot in the hospital. That car, you know where the car came from? It was stolen here in Pacific Grove. They got, they got the license number. On the camera. I'm not quite sure why they didn't track the car down, but be that as it may. So this initiative is an opportunity for all of us in California to fix this law. And get back to a balanced place where we have accountability and meaningful consequences, including treatment. Ultimately, it's going to dramatically reduce the crisis we're seeing with retail theft, homelessness and drug addiction. So one more time, it's called a homelessness. Excuse me, Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. Be on the watch for it. I appreciate your listening to me and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right. Do we have any virtual public comment?
We do not.
All right, move on to the consent agenda. Any council member wishing to pull a consent agenda item? Councilmember Beck? Nine A, okay. Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item? All right, may I have a motion to approve?
Move approval of consent, hearing nine A directly after approval of consent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously onto nine, nine A. We're going to take public comment. Do you want to speak? It's entirely your choice, or we just go to public comment and then to council?
I think that would be appropriate.
All right. Public comment on this item, nine A? Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Buck Rogeman, and I am the Director of Curriculum and Special Projects for PGUSD, and I just wanted to come here this evening and just recognize the work of city staff that has coordinated with us to once again put on a summer adventure camp for our students who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford to go. And so, I thought this was one of the best partnerships that I've seen between the city and PGUSD. The camp took place at Robert Downe last year, and we had about 27 to 32 students attend every day. Because our summer school program is gonna be based at the same school this year, our students who are in summer school are also gonna be able to attend the camp, which basically means that parents are gonna be able to have, you know, full day coverage for their students basically from eight in the morning until five at night. So, just on behalf of the district, our Superintendent Dr. Adamson and our Assistant Superintendent Josh Jordan, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the city council members know it's an important program for us, and we truly deeply appreciate the partnership that we have with the, with the city. It's a wonderful thing, it really is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Beck?
We did do the program last year, and I've gone through the agenda report and the memorandum of understanding, and as Mr. Rogeman knows, I will do anything for the youth of our community. I do have some concerns about the program. Last year, the presentation wasn't very clear, and we did hear from the public, and I'd like some clarification this year. It was presented to us last year, up to 60 students with a large dollar amount of $115,000. I'm curious what the unduplicated pupil population actually means, and maybe Mr. Rogeman can answer that for me?
Sure, the unduplicated pupil population are the students who are English language learners, students who are socio-economically disadvantaged. Those are the students that qualify for the free and reduced lunch program, as well as foster youth and homeless.
Okay, thank you. So, the other questions I have are probably more for the city. Having participated in your summer programs at the youth center, I did see some issues that came up, just because I was a parent dropping off, and my concerns were staffing was, you know, like we had priority for staffing and so forth, or if someone was sick, or we had to reschedule the swimming on Fridays because of the Robert Downe program. And I guess my concern is, is, and if you can pull up the presentation for us, Sandra, please. As a council member, I was of the understanding that we were receiving $115,000 for this program, and we were doing the hiring, we pay the payroll, we oversee all of the program. But after looking at this report, it was really based on attendance, so they didn't have the attendance they were expecting to have, which were probably closer to 60. So, that's a concern of mine, that the city is taking on this partnership. Again, I supported it 110%, and I'm still there this year as well, but I have some concerns, and I'm wondering why the school district is not overseeing the program and why we're partnering kind of at a break even at this point? And yet, the folks like myself who do need childcare during the summer, the program at the youth center is full, and there's a waitlist. So, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we benefit all of the youth that need this program or these programs, where we're not on waiting list, or we can't get into a program, but yet we have, we've been able to hire staff to, to support the students at the school.
Katie, one of you want to answer that question?
I could start. Councilmember Beck, so the amount that we get reimbursed is based on the enrollment and the kids that are there. So, we staff at a certain level, and then all of our costs are reimbursed by the grant. So, when we have the $115,000 in the number that's noted in the MOU tonight, that's based on the highest level of students that could enroll in the program. But then you have some students that don't show up every day, or they're not there for a week, so on and so forth, so then we adjust. And if the part-time employees that are assigned to that are not needed, we don't bring them in just to have them there. And so, that's kind of how the MOU works and the reimbursement. And I'll allow Katie an opportunity also, if she wants to add more to that. I believe that maybe, though, answers your question, is we need to staff appropriately for the largest amount of children that could be there, and then we adjust accordingly to the attendance numbers.
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking is, is we have a difficult time just staffing our programs, right? So, here, we're talking about the pool, we still don't have dates for that. I mean, our public has brought that up on numerous occasions, and then we limit the amount that can actually go to the youth center, and I don't know, is it 28 this year, 24?
And I understand what you're saying, and we really don't have a problem staffing our camp programs. The pool's a separate subject, because it's, you've gotta have these kids at the pool that are certified to be able to teach classes, lifeguard, so on and so forth, and not all every kid wants to do that. And when I say kid, I mean our high school level employees. Some of them want to do the camps, some of them want to be lifeguard certified, you get a few extra bucks for doing that. But not everybody wants that responsibility or that job. We really haven't seen a problem hiring staff for our youth camps. Katie, anything else?
The other piece I would add is that the partnership with PGUSD allowed us to do some joint recruitment. PGUSD specifically, Buck Rogeman, was instrumental in getting us an extra, probably like 10 staff members last year. So, they really assisted us in recruiting those staff. We do have staff that can go between the two programs, so if one has higher numbers one week or another week, we can move them between the two sites. That does give us a little bit more flexibility, allows for if a staff member calls out, if there's a family emergency, for any reason, something happens and a staff member is not there, we can move the staff members between the two sites, which helps us actually keep the schedule more regulated. And last year, there were, when we had lower numbers than expected at the Robert Downe site, we did bring some staff members down to the youth center site and open up spaces off the waitlist.
Again, I guess, this is more for the rec department, not for this program specifically, but, you know, opening up a second location going forward, I think, I think the city needs to seriously think about that, rather than, you know, taking on this adventure. And I know last year, it was my understanding, the full grant went to the school, it wasn't per student, or to the, to the city, it wasn't per student that attended. And, and to hear that we have this need, and we do have such a tremendous need for childcare, that I'm surprised we had such low numbers last year. Again, having, having the summer school there, you probably will have an increase in numbers. But again, I think going forward, we're trying to build our rec program through the rec department, which means perhaps opening another site for these families that truly do need childcare as well. And again, it's great that we received the grant and the students will have a place during the summer at Robert Downe, but I just wanted to bring this forward for people to truly see that, and we're, and we're responsible for the live scans. And I think, again, that should be something that should be at expense to the school district and not to the city.
That's definitely something that we could discuss with the school district as a reimbursable as part of the grant that they received for this. We have no issue doing that. And I would like to just say that this time last year, we had just been approached with this program, and we were scrambling to try to get it together. This time, fast forward one year later, we're accepting, looking for approval of an MOU tonight, then we can really start advertising this through our rec programs, through the school district, and get those attendance numbers where we would like to see them for all the people and the kids in Pacific Grove.
Yeah, I do, I do believe, I agree with you, it was, it was a fast shuffle last year, and I do think overall, we all were of the understanding that it was the full amount and not per student, and I know I've watched the rec board meetings waiting for the report, and, and I couldn't find a report that it even, you know, provided the numbers, that's the reason I reached out to Mr. Pearl to see what we were actually reimbursed, so it was half of what I think the city, what we thought we would be expecting for the program. Again, I'm glad we received the grant, as Mr. Rogeman knows, I support students in Pacific Grove 110%, but I do, I have some concerns for our own rec program. And can you confirm, is it 24 or 28 during our summer program at the youth center?
The goal to run the youth center will be between 30 and 40 students at that site.
Okay, and, and looking at the MOU too, it looks like you will kind of utilize several facilities for the students with this grant, not just at Robert Downe, is that correct?
The camp will be primarily held at Robert Downe. I believe the other sites were included in the MOU in case we needed them, so that they could just be there for clarification. We'll be taking them to the swimming pool and to the parks with some of the other program, but the primary location will be at the school.
Okay, and so, I guess, again, my concern for signing up at the youth center for, for students will start, it will open up as it regularly does, it will not take the students from the grant money and place them in those positions first? How will that work?
We're working on having our registration open up simultaneously at the same time that we're, we'll be receiving the names from the students at the school, so that we can know that they can go on to one list and have the registration open for the other students.
Okay. I'd like to understand that a little bit more, just because everyone knows you have to call in and, you know, get online within the first 10 minutes to get a spot, so I hope everyone understands that, you know, to get childcare for the summer, it takes, in the first 10 minutes, they all fill up. So, that's my concern. So, if someone is on that, that schedule of trying to do that, and we're, we're pulling from two lists, then it may fill up even sooner.
So, I can clarify that. Last, last year, we had this approved after parents had signed up their children, so we did have some students who were on the youth center list, who were then approved for the ELOP program, and we transferred them over and then brought students off the waitlist for the youth center program. This year, we're hoping to have, working, partnering with the school, to have all the students who qualify for the ELOP program, let them know ahead of time, so that they know that they don't need to sign up for the youth center program, that they can wait and sign up for the ELOP program, leaving the spaces open for regular registration at the youth center.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion, please.
Move to, I believe, recommended action number one. So, just a quick comment, Your Honor.
Please.
I actually think this is a great program, and I know we ran in, last, really quickly into it last year, but we, I appreciate the school district stepping up and us partnering with them, and I think it'll just get bigger and better. And, you know, we have issues here and with our rec department clearly, but we, we're gonna, working on it, we're working on it, and so, you know, this just provides additional childcare, so I don't see that as a, I don't see that as a problem, and I'm in favor of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're hearing item 11A.
This'll be my item, as is the next item. On this one, the issue is whether or not to adopt an ordinance under section 2.04050A of the Pacific Grove Municipal Code. It makes a change to the language. The current language that's found in your agenda packet reads that "The city manager shall prepare, circulate, and post in conformity with the provisions of the Brown Act and council policy, not less than 72 hours before any regular and special meetings and agenda." Under the Brown Act, the law is that posting of an agenda 24 hours before a special meeting is the, is the minimum. You can certainly post longer than 24, but it can be up to 24 hours. So, I have provided in the agenda report some language, it's underlined on page 91 of your packet, and I'll read how that would provide if you approve this ordinance. It says, "The city manager shall prepare, circulate, and post in conformity with the provisions of the Brown Act and council policy, not less than 72 hours before any regular council meeting, and not less than 24 hours before any special council meeting," an agenda which shall list the items. So, that language there is what is proposed to be added by this ordinance, and the recommendation is set forth in your agenda, namely, to request that I read the title, and then in one motion, you could handle the balance of the recommendation actions, which are to introduce the ordinance and to direct a summary of the ordinance to be published. And I'm available for questions.
Any public comment? Please come forward. Seeing none, any virtual public comment?
We do not have virtual public comment.
Counsel discussion? Councilmember Claddy?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Your Honor.
Please.
Would you like me to read the title first?
I would like to you to request the city attorney read the title of the ordinance, please.
Assistance and ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacific Grove, amending section 2.04050A of the Pacific Grove Municipal Code Regarding Order of Agenda.
And I'd like to move that we waive further reading and introduce an ordinance amending section 2.04050A of the Pacific Grove Municipal Code Regarding Order of Agenda, and direct a summary of a proposed ordinance be published as approved by the city attorney.
And a second by Councilmember Emilio. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Pyrick?
This next item might take a little bit longer than that one.
Double billing for our city attorney here.
Well, I see her anyway. Can I get the PowerPoint brought up, please? While that's being done, I will just give you a spoiler alert that this involves a request for direction by the council to the city manager to issue a request for proposal for a demographer in connection with the California Voting Rights Act. Next slide. So, by way of discussion, we begin with, and the information that's in these slides is, is all set forth in the agenda packet. The slides will kind of help guide us through the, the analysis here. So, the city received a letter from Andrew Sandoval on behalf of the League of United Latin American Citizens, known by the acronym as LULAC, from Mr. Sandoval of that organization. Back in August of, of 2022, in the letter, there was a demand that the city change its at-large voting system to a by-district voting system for the city council. The letter was posted on the city's website when it was received. So, let me just pause there for a moment to kind of explain what at-large and by-district means, so that everyone has a common understanding of that. So, your current system is that all of the council members are elected at-large. That means that every two years, certain number of council members will be running, and the mayor runs every two years. And then, all of the residents can vote for the, for the council members. They are not limited as to who they can vote for. With districts, that the city is divided into districts, and right now, that would be, you have six council members, so that would be six districts, and you would have one council member from each district. So, then the voters would vote for the candidates So then the voters would vote for the candidates from their district. So if I lived in District One and there was, uh, let's say two candidates in District One, I would be able to cast a vote for one of those two candidates, but I would not be able to cast a vote for any of the candidates, um, who are running for the other districts. And the districts typically are numbered, District One, Two, et cetera. So that is a district voting system versus an at-large system. And as I indicated, the request from this, uh, Mr. Sandoval was that the city, uh, changed to the by-district voting for council rather than the at-large system which you currently have. So when that letter was received, um, the case of Pico, uh, Neighborhood Association versus the City of Santa Monica was pending. Um, and since that time, the California Supreme Court has issued its decision in that case, which I'm going to talk about now. So, um, while I'm still on this slide, I will say that that was, um, uh, an unknown at the time the letter was received as to, uh, what that case was going to, um, uh, come down with in terms of a decision. So the decision by the city as to whether to change or not to district elections was deferred, um, while the, uh, Supreme Court case was pending. So I have the next slide, please. So, um, we'll talk about the Santa Monica case in a few minutes. Um, what this slide does is talk about the California Voting Rights Act, which is, um, known by its acronym of the CVRA. Um, there's really not that many sections to this, um, the CVRA. They are found in the Elections Code, uh, 14025 to 14032. Um, those sections have been attached to the agenda packet. Um, and I'm not going to go through detail as to each of those provisions. Um, certainly, um, they're available, uh, for review. Um, essentially, under the CVRA, a plaintiff must prove that there is racially polarized voting that results in a dilution of the ability of protected class voters to elect a chosen candidate. So in English, um, what that means is that if there's a protected class of voters, let's say, for example, Hispanics, um, who are, um, uh, uh, not able to, um, elect their chosen candidate due to the dilution of their vote, and there has been racial polarization, um, that is done by an analysis. It's called a regression analysis. It's fairly complicated. Um, there was some hope that the Santa Monica case might provide some standards for that. Um, and I'll get to that when I, uh, talk more about the Santa Monica case. Um, under federal law, um, in terms of the Voting Rights Act, um, uh, there is a requirement that a, a district, if a district were formed, that it would have a, a majority of minority voters within that district so that they would, uh, be able to elect a candidate of their choice. However, the CVRA does not have that requirement. So for example, if there were, uh, a district that was drawn and the Latino voters in that district only constituted, let's say, 25% of the, um, uh, voters in that district, that could in theory be sufficient. It does not have to reach a, uh, 51% uh, level. So another thing that the CVRA does is it expands the ability of plaintiffs to recover their attorney's fees. Uh, and it makes the award of attorney's fees mandatory if the plaintiffs prevail. Typically, in these lawsuits, the plaintiffs will hire an expert witness who's going to provide testimony. Presumably, they have done their homework before they filed the lawsuit. Um, and that expert would, uh, presumably come to a conclusion that there has been racially polarized voting that has resulted in a dilution of the ability to elect a chosen candidate. If the plaintiff prevails in that case, then they are entitled to recover their attorney's fees and expert fees, which can be substantial. And I'll give some examples in a few minutes. In contrast, if the, uh, defendant, in this case, a city, um, uh, in the CVR case wins the case by showing that there's not racial polarization resulting in a dilution of the voting, then they cannot recover their attorney's fees or their costs. Um, so, uh, next slide, please. Uh, I wanted to let you know which cities in Monterey County, uh, currently use district elections. The five of them are listed here, Monterey, Salinas, Marina, Greenfield, and King City. Uh, next slide, please. So here's the Santa Monica case again, um, and the court did hold, as consistent with what the CVRA says, is that a plaintiff must prove that the combination of the at-large voting and the voting patterns reflecting racial polarization, racial polarization, resulted in the dilution of the ability of a protected class of voters to elect their chosen candidate. Now, what the Supreme Court did not do, which some people were hoping would be done, is to say what that, um, uh, standard would be. And as indicated in the second bullet point here, that there is no bright line percentage beneath which an action under the CVRA cannot be sustained. So for example, um, in the hypothetical I gave a few minutes ago, if you had, let's say, District One and, um, uh, and you had, before you had districts, let's say, the Latino population constituted, and I'm just, uh, using hypothetical numbers here, we'd need to do some analysis to find out what the numbers really are. But let's assume citywide, it's 18%. Um, and that after districts were formed, let's say District One would have 26%. Um, so it would increase because the, the, uh, the concentration of the Latino voters within that district. So you have an increase from 18% to 26%. The question then would be, is that a sufficient, uh, 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 percentage such that it would reflect that they are going to be able to influence the outcome of the election with that 8% increase? Or would it need to be some higher percentage? Now, as I indicated in the slide, there is no bright line. There is no percentage that was set forth in the Supreme Court decision, which is somewhat understandable because the statute doesn't have a percentage. And, and we didn't get from the Santa Monica case, a statement of what that percentage would be. So a lot of it has to do with the interpretation of the facts and what the history of the city is, which is why you hire a demographer to do that analysis, both of the, uh, voting history in the city and of the racial composition of your voters. Um, the, uh, as I indicated in the final bullet on this slide, uh, the Santa Monica case has been remanded to the trial court um, for consideration of the dilution issues under the standard that was set forth in that court's decision. All right, let's move on to the next slide. The, the remedies under the, um, CVRA are, um, according to the statute, quote unquote, appropriate remedies. And there are different election, uh, methods that are used in various cities in the state, uh, in- including what's sometimes referred to as cumulative voting or ranked voting. Um, however, uh, the meth, the remedies that have been imposed by the courts, uh, in the CVR cases, which have been decided so far, has been districts. There's, as you see on the slide, the City of Highland case, there the court, uh, required, uh, district elections. The same thing in the City of Palmdale case, it was district elections. And there is some question about whether or not some of these alternative voting methods, such as cumulative voting, uh, are even, um, possible, uh, to be conducted in particular counties because there may be limitations on the county system as to what they can or cannot accommodate. So district elections are typically the remedy that you will see, both imposed by the courts and by, uh, different, uh, public agencies. All, I believe all of the five, um, cities that I mentioned in Monterey County, uh, are using districts. And all of the other cities that I know of that have changed from at-large voting have gone to, to districts as their, uh, voting, uh, method. Can I have the next slide, please? So here's some examples of the recoveries by plaintiffs in lawsuits filed against cities in CVR cases. So the City of Santa Monica case is still pending. Um, uh, my understanding is that the plaintiff said, uh, previously requested the sum of, uh, $22 million, but that was some time ago, before there was continued litigation. So I, it's unknown what that number eventually will be if the plaintiffs end up prevailing. That is a case that was, um, litigated very heavily, um, at the trial court level, at the Court of Appeal, and before the Supreme Court. Um, so that's the Santa Monica case. The City of Palmdale case is a reported case. Um, and, um, in that case, the plaintiffs were awarded four and a half million dollars. And the City of Highland, the only issue there was, was the remedy. Um, because, uh, as my understanding is, the City of Highland did not dispute, um, uh, the, the liability issue. Uh, City of Santa Clara, uh, an award of three and a half million dollars, and the City of Modesto, also three and a half million. Um, part of the reason for the expensive nature of litigation is that it's complicated litigation. Um, there's, and, uh, uh, as I indicated previously, there's demographic analysis that's needed. There's expert witnesses that are required. Um, so it is, uh, an expensive method of litigation. It's an expensive case to try on both sides, which is why you end up seeing, uh, dollar amounts like I'm sharing with you here. Next slide, please. Uh, no jurisdiction, um, which has been, uh, sued in a CVR case that has gone to trial has won. Um, uh, however, um, I should mention that, as I did in my earlier comments, even if a, a city does win, um, and, and you're not required to change to districts, it is an expensive proposition, um, easily a high six-figure number, maybe a seven-figure number. It's, it's hard to predict in advance, not knowing how extensive the litigation is going to be. But, um, the attorneys that specialize in these cases charge, uh, very high hourly rates, uh, as do the experts who are, uh, are retained to, um, do a battle of the experts, basically, um, as well as the legal issues that come up that, uh, have to be briefed. Uh, next slide, please. So this slide talks about the city's charter and what it says about voting. And under your Article Six, and I'll just quote it, says, "The mayor and the members of the city council should be elected from the city at large." You recall in my introductory comments, I explained at-large, meaning that anybody in the city, any voter in the city can vote for any candidate. Um, now, the, and then if you juxtapose that with the districts, which are not at-large, how do we reconcile that with your charter? Um, and I will tell you that we do not have any court cases that deal with the issue of the legality of charter cities with at-large elections specified in their charter and their transition to, uh, by-district elections without a charter amendment vote. Obviously, if you have a charter amendment vote, then the issue is moot. But what happens if the, if you haven't, uh, amended your charter to allow for district elections? So we do have a few examples here I can share with you. Um, in the City of Sunnyvale, there was a transition, uh, to districts, and that included a charter amendment ballot measure that, that authorized, shouldn't be the changer there, it should just be the change. Um, uh, with the City of Santa Rosa, they interpreted their charter as enabling the, it's my understanding, that they interpreted their charter as enabling the city to transition to by-districts without first amending the city charter. And significantly, in the Palmdale case, that the City of Palmdale had a charter that required, uh, at-large voting. Um, however, uh, after the trial and the court found that the city was in violation of the CVRA, the court imposed the districts on the City of Palmdale in spite of the city charter that required at-large elections. So that's the situation with the charter. Um, uh, the next slide, please. So there is a process. Um, if the city would at some point, uh, make a decision to transition from at-large uh, to district elections, and it's, um, itemized here, beginning with this slide, you would retain a demographer. Uh, the demographer would do various things, as I indicated in the, um, staff report. Uh, the recommendation is to, um, uh, issue an RFP for a qualified demographer, uh, to study the demographics of the city. Now, that would include the population of the city and its various racial and ethnic groups under the 2020 census, the most recent estimates of the proportion of eligible voters in the various racial and ethnic groups, an estimate of the socioeconomic characteristics of the various racial and ethnic groups, the criteria governing the design of the electoral districts for the election of city council members, and a proposed timeline for the transition to by-district elections, should the city decide to, um, uh, upon that course. So that is what the demographer would do in addition to, uh, uh, other work. So that's step one. Step two, uh, would be to adopt what's called a resolution of intent to transition and to, to complete the thought, to transition from at-large to districts. Thirdly, there would be two public hearings. Um, that would be before the district maps are drawn. Next, you would publish the draft maps and then the election sequences to which districts would be, uh, voting in which election. So you wouldn't have, uh, in one year, all, if you have six districts, all six districts up for election. Most likely, it would be three in, in one year, and then two years later, um, three others. Or we would have some latitude in terms of how we, um, how, how that would be set up. Then the next step would be you would have a hearing on the draft maps. Next slide, please. Then you would publish any additional maps. There would be a second hearing on the draft maps, at which you would select the preferred map. The next step would be to have a final hearing and a determination of the sequence of the, of which districts would be voting when. And you would introduce an ordinance that, um, my recommendation would be, would make the ordinance contingent on voter approval of a charter amendment. And then the last step would be the adoption of the ordinance, which is the second reading, which is, you're all familiar with the process of a first reading and a second reading. And this ordinance would require that same process, uh, a second reading. So it's a lot of steps. It's, um, set forth in the Elections Code 10010. Um, I believe I attached that as, uh, an attachment to the agenda report. Uh, I did, that was attachment five. Um, so, uh, you can, um, you certainly review that in further detail, but this is a summary of, of what those requirements are. Um, can I have the next slide, please? So in conclusion, um, in order to evaluate the city's demographics in the way that I kind of elaborated upon a few minutes ago, um, and the potential issues regarding the CVRA, the recommendation tonight is that the city council direct the city manager to issue a request for proposal for a qualified demographer to study the demographics of the city and to return to the city council with the report by the demographer for discussion and further direction. And the next slide? My favorite questions, so. If, if I'm available to respond to, to your questions at this time or later.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Please come forward. Welcome.
Comment is that under the California Voting Rights Act, is that what it's referred to?
Yes.
I think it's wrong that if you're a defendant and you prevail in a court case, that you cannot take an action against the party that is bringing lawsuits. Frivolous lawsuits permeate through the court system all the time. And we have attorneys that are just basically there chasing the bucks, and it is wrong. That's my first comment. Second comment is, um, I'm not against districting, you know, those types of chopping up the community and deciding. I am curious as to how we're going to draw the lines, and it is, I guess it's the demographer that will be doing that as a suggestion. But, um, you know, we have a great community here, and I don't see that there being a problem. I definitely will say that in other communities, there has been, uh, underrepresented, uh, groups not being able to express themselves on councils. So I think that this proposal might be a good idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, I'm back again. I see, I love how we have no participation or very limited participation from the public involvement in city government. This is the democracy that Joe Biden constantly talks about us defending? Where's the participation? Anyway, that's why I'm here. Just would have that one gentleman speak. So, um, have you been to Little Saigon in Western Pacific Grove here? How about North Beach, down by Lover's Point where all the Italians live? I mean, what is this? You're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on this survey, this demographic thing? This is absurd. They should, instead of Lulac, it should be called Lunacy, if you want my opinion, and we're going to have to cave in again to this nonsense? If you just want to draw, divide it up into four or five districts, go ahead. How hard is that? You get a cartographer, get a map of the city, you draw a couple of black lines. There you go, District one, two, three, four, five. No, we have to go through this whole process with a demographer? What are we looking for here? Where all the Vietnamese people live? Where all the Italians or Greeks live? How about all the handicap people? And by the way, I thought this country was a melting pot, not a stew. Okay, my ancestors came from Italy. Do I think that much differently than you? Well, in most cases, I think we do when it comes to city government, but generally speaking, you know what, a Spanish people, with Spanish heritage, they have big different issues that we have to go through this whole process for? We don't even have a Spanish community or an Italian community or a Greek community. Where's Germantown or Irishtown? You know, I mean, what, what, where is this going? This, this whole system is ridiculous. That's all I want to share with you, tell you how ridiculous I think this is. It's going to cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? Like the mandate, the housing mandate's going to cost us a million just to get the ball rolling of city taxpayer funds. I, I, I gotta shake my head, this is hilarious. I wish there were more people knew what was going on, because I'd love to hear somebody else's viewpoint on this. Okay, well, thanks a lot, and I'm gonna go home now. You guys hash it out, I'll watch it on, you know, this is broadcast on YouTube? I can watch, go home and watch it on YouTube, it's great, you know? Anyway, let's see how many call-ins you have, any Zoomers you have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Sally Moore, and I am a resident, and I'm just wondering if, and during your discussion, if you can tell me what would happen if it gets to where we vote and it's voted down? Are we back to square one? Are we going to go to court? How does that work? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any virtual public comment?
We do, we have four. First up, we have Inge, Ms. Inge.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, well, we've certainly, the letter was received in August, and we actually had, we've been forewarned for a long time that this was happening, and frankly, I don't want to spend buku bucks on lawyer's fees for trying to fight something like this. But I do suggest that this is why we brought up Measure O in November of two thousand twenty-two, is because dividing Pacific Grove into seven, six districts for all the council members that we have is just as ridiculous as going block by block. Uh, we need to reduce the council to four. Four districts is doable. Um, and that measure lost, Measure O, lost by thirteen votes only. Well, in the light of districts, doesn't it make more sense to go ahead and cave to the districts, because that is what we will have to do no matter what, without spending millions on the lawyers? But it's time to put the measure on again to divide it into four-only districts rather than six, which is completely untenable for our small, small city. Yes, I see it as pitting people against each other, and I really don't like that. However, this is not one that we can fight as our small city and our limited revenues. Wouldn't you rather have it on recreation and roads than lawyer's fees? I, I mean, yes, this is the wave of the future, we can't get away from that. And unfortunately, it's not going to be thrown out as a frivolous lawsuit or anything else, and we can't recover any costs of fighting it. So if we're going to put something on the ballot, I mean, yes, hire a demographer, but let's hope it comes in low, because we don't exactly have a lot to work with here as to trying to find, you know? We are pretty integrated as far as what minorities we have, they are integrated all over the city. I don't think we have a district that's particularly minority in any way, but you know, let's just move ahead, because it's ridiculous to fight it. This is, this is, this is a state, you know? This is adamant groups that are hell-bent to turn us into this, so let's do it reasonably. Put some measures on the ballot. Four districts would be really the max. Thank you very much.
We have Nancy Parsons.
Ah, well, I'm Ray Parsons, uh, Nancy's husband, and I wanted to speak, but her name came up on the computer, so can I speak? Um, you know, I think uh, the districts on racial and ethnic lines is a pretty strange way to have district elections in Pacific Grove, because people live where they can live. They don't live next to, Italians don't live next to Italians, black people, nothing, black people. We all live where we can. But the district is uh, different. There is Del Monte Park, and there is the district that goes along golf course by the beach. And there is the eastern part of uh, Pacific Grove towards Monterey. And these are separate people with separate um, well, separate problems, I guess. But um, it seems to me that that this racial and ethnic thing just doesn't work here. Also, uh, finding the demographics of the area would be a great project for the high school, for some kids in the high school. There's no need to go out and hire um, not for a town fifteen thousand people. No, I don't think so. I think uh, you could keep it in town and keep, and and give it to the kids. Be a great instructional tool. And uh, but I am for district elections. I think these districts ought to be uh, represented a little more clearly than they are. Um, thanks a lot.
Next, we have Lisa Siani.
Thank you. Um, well, it strikes me that that a demographer is an important place to start, because we need data to really understand what the situation is. Um, I can't say that I'm familiar with the whole entire, the whole entire teeny-tiny town. Uh, I, I, I think I've read that it's only two square miles, which I find is a little smaller than I would have guessed, but in any case, um, I mean, we have a DEI task force, and there seems to be some real differences of opinion there, so. But not necessarily based on race or ethnicity. Um, but yeah, if there's a problem, yes, let's correct it. Uh, but my questions are, would it, what if a demographer finds that there's really no logical way to make districts that that we really aren't divided up that way uh, in terms of neighborhoods? And, and then if we did go for district elections, what happens if nobody runs in some district? And then do we have fewer council members? You know, there's a whole lot that that I don't understand about it. Uh, it are, it strikes me that our town is too small and not so racially divided by living areas, but I could be totally wrong, so yes, please, let's, let's start with a demographer. Uh, but, but I'd love to understand if there's anything in the very nice, long Agenda Report uh, about how the district elections work. I, I didn't see it, and, and, and I do remember when we voted on this issue before, um, on the issue of simply of having district elections. And, and one, one council member made a very compelling argument for why that would be, even though my, my inclination was, no, I don't, I don't think we need district elections. But anyway, it lost, so it seems to me we can end up wasting money no matter what we do, because if, if we decide on this and then um, and then the city, the community, the, the residents vote against it, where are we then? I, maybe there's some things I'm missing, but anyway, thank you. I appreciate that you're giving this careful consideration, and I'll be very interested to see how this turns out.
We have Carmelita Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your service. Well, quite frankly, the city's back is up against the wall, and I agree with some of the speakers who have um, suggested, you know, just to uh, do what you need to do uh, to move forward. Um, I don't want to see the city in a lawsuit, because I think the evidence is clear that the city would lose. Um, you know, I, I don't believe demographically the city fits the profile for district elections based on that. Um, one speaker was uh, shared about the different um, areas of of Pacific Grove, and I agree with that. Um, I would say uh, district elections, but um, it's district needs and not so much racial. Um, so the um, areas that I'm thinking about is the retreat area, Del Monte Park, Assilimar area, the Erdley um, Avenue area, Pine Avenue, Laurel Avenue. So, you know, I see these as very distinct areas of the town and that the needs for these particular areas are different um, from the other areas we have. And I would um, you know, highly recommend that while everything is going to the ballot, that the council be reduced to five members. Um, there are other cities who have five members and function quite well. Um, and I, and I think that would um, help the um, district representation as well. Um, so I was looking at the city's demographics uh, while I was sitting here, and um, you know, there's ten percent Hispanic, six percent Asian, one percent black, four percent other, and seventy-nine percent white. So to say we need district elections based on uh, you know, racial and and ethnic need that, leave that one iota. You know, it's because of another uh, community's error in in poor representation that this whole thing uh, of district elections got sparked. So you need to keep that in mind. Anyway, I would just encourage you to move forward and, you know, get this over with. Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Gibbs.
Uh, Council, this is Mike Gibbs. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I uh, I think it's all been said. Former Mayor Carmelita Garcia uh, pretty much said it the way I would say it. The only, I want to only add a couple of things. First of all, there is going to be a cost to this. I'd like to know what the cost is. It's a little hard to say, but the cost of the demographer and then putting the elections into play. Second, are the cost of a district elections greater than the cost of uh, election when you have seven members at large? Uh, I'd kind of like to have that answered, and I get, for me, I um, I, you know, I don't really feel one way or the other, except that I don't like being in the situation that the city is being told as a charter city what to do. And other people said we should just give in. I think that has unintended consequences. I'd rather be in control of our own uh, destiny here. And, and the last thing is, um, as Ms. Garcia said, the uh, the distribution uh, of diversity in the city isn't too great, really. Uh, and I live in the district that was represented by Frank Rivera uh, as a school board representative. And when they went to districts, uh, the only uh, sort of, the only uh, Hispanic was kicked off, was basically lost the election. And um, so I, I think the unintended consequences are going to be, uh, well, unintended, we won't know them until it happens. I'd just rather be in our own, can, control of our own destiny. So keep, keep the costs as low as you can, do it as quickly as possible, and get it in front of the people. Thank you very much.
We have no further comment.
Welcome.
Uh, my name's Tom Jensen, been living in the city for fifty years. Don't really have a lot to say about this. I was watching it on TV and uh, hopped on my bike, came down here, so all my comments are going to be a little bit half-baked about this redistrict thing, because it just seems kind of stupid to me to do this. It's just lacking in common sense. We want the best council members from, from the entire city. What if this council, the all, all you people, the excellent council members here, all, what if you all lived in one block? And you were talking over the hedges about the projects and stuff like that? Would you be excluded from being on the council because you worked, worked in the Rice District? Is that what this is about? Because that, that's out. And we don't want to spend money on stupid stuff like this. We just want the best people on the council from the entire city. We want this entire labor pool focused on the city council and coming in here, doing a great job for the city. This ridiculous thing is just stupid. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Council of Discussion.
Did you want me to respond to any of the questions that were brought up, or?
No, we don't usually respond unless I think uh, some of the council members will probably echo uh, some of the questions. So, Councilmember Beck.
When the school district was going through this process and hiring a demographer, and again, as Mr. Gibbs mentioned, Dr. Rivera uh, lost his seat on the school board, so the one Hispanic that was running, because uh, someone was running against him, um, he lost his seat. So I'm almost feeling like, yes, we probably unfortunately have to hire a demographer, but is there any way we could partner with the school district, since we're working collaboratively with them now? And I know that their district was just a tad bit different because of Pebble Beach, but why can't we do some research with who they worked with? I know they went through a hiring process as well, and uh, maybe the intensity won't be as great, um, because they pretty much know our community already, and and that was about two years ago, I think. Was it the last, was it two years ago already? Yeah, year and a half ago. Anyway, just a thought. And again, um, then we, then we, with district voting, we, we do have those who run unopposed. And you know, you see that in other communities as well, and that's unfortunate when you have someone who runs unopposed um, other than a mayor. So um, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, there. Um, yeah, thank you, everyone, for the comments. Unfortunately, another one of those situations where, whether we like it or not, it's way more expensive to try and fight it than to do what we need to do to make it happen in the way that leaves us in the driver's seat of doing it in the way that best suits our city. So um, I do have, let me kind of go over to here. Um, so it seems like a demographer would be the key first step. Um, and thank you to Carmelita Garcia for providing the numbers, because I wasn't actually sure what the breakdowns were um, from a racial, ethnic standpoint, so. And it may be the case that we have some logically line uh, district lines, however, I expect also that will have to be divided by number of voters per district versus what we maybe think of as our districts as well. So I guess the demographer is the first step. And a lot of the questions that were asked by the, the residents were actually the same questions I have, so I'm happy to ask you those questions. Um, so one of the, actually, why don't I just start with the order? They asked him, how's that? Um, so really good question. We, we put this to the voters before, lost by thirteen votes in an effort to try and get it down to five council members, so we would have only four district, districts in preparation for this. What does happen if we put this to the voters and they don't vote for it, not being maybe aware of the importance? And they don't vote for it not being maybe aware of the importance of this and the implications if we don't adopt it?
We've got two things going on here. One is the number of council members. And that currently is six. My understanding, as has been mentioned this evening, is that when this was on the ballot in 2022, that it lost by 13 votes. So it was close. If that measure were to go on to your November ballot and that, and it were successful and the number of council members was reduced to four, then if the district lines and maps are prepared after November, then they could be consistent with whatever the outcome of that election is. So if the election, you know, if it loses again, then, then that's, it's a two time loser and, and you can't just keep waiting every two years to see if it's going to get reduced from six to four. But if it, if it, if the, if the, if the reduction occurs, then if you're drawing your maps after that election, you, you would then draw maps for four. If, if the election results are that you continue to have six, then you would have maps for the six districts.
And I think that gets to the other part of my question. So it's really a two-part ballot measure. One, do we go from at-large to district elections? Because since that's in our charter, my understanding is that has to be voted on as one part of it. And the second part of it is do we move from six to four council members plus a mayor at large?
Well, none of this is simple, but let's proceed along this thought process. We go to the November 2024 election, assuming that there is a measure on the ballot for reduction from six to four. Then whatever that number is after that election, then I, I do not believe you should have the same election on whether to go to the CVRA, whether to go to districts at the same election as you're deciding the reduction from six to four, because the voters, I believe, need to know what the districts are going to look like, rather than just the abstract concept of districts. So the, I, I believe the most transparent and, and, and method and then the one that would engage the public in a knowledgeable manner would be, see what happens in November. If it gets reduced from six to four, you do four districts. Proceed with the process through four districts if that's what you decide to do is to go to districts. If it's still at six, then you do six districts. Then you would include after that election, you, you go through the process that I had in that, those couple of slides. You would have the maps prepared, you would have the hearings and, and, and while I'm going here, let me say this. There is an extreme amount of public input that's built in already to the system and you, and you can provide even more public participation into that process. You just can't provide less. So the public can prepare their own maps. They can comment upon the maps that have been prepared by the demographer. At the end of the day, you may end up with a map that is kind of a combination. Maybe it's one that was prepared by the demographer, but modified based on public suggestions. So there's different ways for the maps to be prepared, but there's significant public input that would be involved, both with the initial hearings about what's important to the community with regard to what the districts look like. And then once you have that input in the first couple of hearings, then if you, you move on to, to start drawing the lines and, and, and drawing the maps and they are in draft and they're put out to the public in time for them to look at, comment on. There are some demographers that have a system where the public even can be interactive and create their, and, and go on the website and, and draw their own maps. And then the demographer can look at that map and, and see whether or not that's going to be consistent, because there's some rules that are required when you draw the maps. You can't just take a map of the city and just draw lines anywhere. For example, they have to be roughly equal in population is one standard. They, they can't be, you know, some kind of a crazy configuration where they're, you know, look like just one long strip that goes all the way around the city. And I'm using this for exaggeration purposes, but you know, like, let's say the, the hundred yard boundary around the city is a district. You can't do that. I mean, there's got to be some logical, methodical way to draw the districts with approximate equal population. And you can consider the various factors that are included. And, and that's what demographers do. And, and the demographers have been doing this for many years now. The CVRA was adopted in 2001. So this isn't their first rodeo and they've worked on these district maps for hundreds of public agencies in this, in, in the state. And certainly when, if, if the, the direction of council is to have an RFP to be issued for demographers, you're going to want to get a, a, you know, a very good, high quality demographer that has a lot of experience with, with doing the demographic analysis and drawing maps.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And I would actually argue because I think that it's important that residents, when this comes on the ballot, the idea of voting for districts, either four or six, that this isn't just a matter of, we think we need seven council members versus five. This is a matter of making it really clear that if we vote for six districts or for six, seven council members, six council members plus a mayor, that means dividing our city up into six districts. And I think we might get a different result on the ballot measure if we are really clear. And I'm actually wondering if we could start doing public outreach prior to a November election. So the citizens do have the information. We've hats and speakers point out that a lot of citizens aren't aware of these issues. So I think the more we can do to get the word out of why we're doing this so that we have success in getting to the four separate districts that makes the map drawing easier. Cause that was going to be one of my questions. Do we have to come back with both six and four? But it sounds like doing them in this order will solve that issue, which I think is good.
Hopefully it will. There's no guarantees in life, but I, I think that if we can in a perfect world, resolve the issue of the number of districts first, preferably at the November election, and then draw the maps based on whether it's going to be six or four, rather than do two, two sets of maps would be a preferable method. And then, once you know how many districts it's going to be, then you draw the maps, then you drop, adopt the ordinance, and then you take it to the voters for the approval, consideration of the approval of the charter amendment. And then it would be at the November 26 election when the district, that would be your first district elections. My understanding is that there would be a, a statewide election in June of 26, which is when you could have the vote on the charter amendment. But, you know, we're getting ahead of ourselves just a little bit here, but I know that you need to look at the end game as well as the, you know, the front game, I guess, to see where this is all going. Tonight is the first step of a journey. And by authorizing the RFP process, you select a qualified demographer. The demographer comes back with a report presented at a council meeting. There, there will be, to make sure the public that's here in, in TV land understands that there will be significant opportunity for public comment and for public input. Tonight is just the first step. There will be many steps. And, and the next step will be when the report from the demographer comes back and after you've selected the demographer, then that report comes back. That will then provide some information. I've heard some comments from council and, and from, I think a few of the members of the public about needing information. And absolutely that's important. So this is part of the information gathering process. This is not the decision process. The decision of whether you're going to go to districts and how many districts there will be and what the maps will look like. Those, those are all decision points that will come later in the process. And as I've said now a few times, there will be significant public input at each and every stage.
Thanks very much for that. And I think that was an important thing about this discussion is kind of an opening or an entree into the discussion so that the community understands why we're going through this process. And just to kind of, I really appreciated the, the presentation and how well it summarized all the materials that were presented. But the key thing I think we have to consider is we could decide that we don't think that this makes sense. But if we fight it, not only do we not get our fees back for the initial lawsuit, we've seen what it can end up costing. And there's no guarantee that yet another plaintiff couldn't come and sue us again. And so we could be looking at this whole process again and again and again. So knowing this and, and knowing that the courts are not really making a statement in a way that helps us define what our liability would be going forward. It seems like that's the only way to proceed and this is a really important thing to do. And I had another point that just left my head, but, but, but I think that moving this process along is really important. And that really lets us kind of, again, be in the driver's seat of how we move going forward, rather than it kind of being outside of our control. Thank you.
I, I think, Mr. Perrick, thank you for the report. But you used a great word. You said this is just the start of a journey. And even when we're talking about an election this year and 2026, the, the results of that election aren't implemented till further elections. So we're talking about a years-long journey.
That, that's, you're looking at me for affirmation. The answer is yes.
Confirmation. Yes. So this is something that's going to be settled at the end of this calendar year, this, this election or even the following election. It's going to be the, the, when the dust settles on this, we're, we're talking potentially four years from now.
Well, it'll depend on, it'll depend on a number of variables. If, if the maps can be drawn after the November election once you know whether you've got a four district or six district, that'll be helpful to move the process along. And then, as I said before, there is the, the general election, statewide election in, I believe, June of 26, when, when you could have the proposed charter amendment, in which case then you could have district elections as early as November of 26. But, you know, like I said, I think all of this is just trying to see what's on the horizon without blocking it in stone. My advice to you is let's start with the first step, which is hire the, you know, let's do the RFP, get the demographer, do the analysis, get the information that, that the council and the public needs to see so that we can have an intelligent, informed conversation about what we should do next.
Mayor Tim Smith.
Couldn't have said it better myself, counsel. Thank you for that. No, I, I think that everything you said was, makes sense. I, I linearly. And we need to, we've had a lot of comments, some really good comments tonight up here on the dais about it, but we do need to move forward and to take the next step into the elections code, get the thing rolling because we're not gonna, it's looking like they're undefeated at this point and just steamrolling the state. So, and then the law is written in such a way that it probably makes that pretty hard to defeat. So that'd be my, my understanding of it is that if the law is written in a certain way, it's, it can be a very big advantage in litigation. So given all that, you know, I just want to take it step by step. Interesting discussion about the number of council members. I do think that obviously less would make sense under this, the way things are going, but I, I think we do need to take that, that step of figuring out what is a public, how many council members does the public want to have? Do they want four? Do they want to have six on, on this next ballot? And maybe get some public outreach on, you know, by, oh, by the way, coming right behind it is this wholesale change of our electoral system in Pacific Grove, California, which is about in, in the 90th percentile range of happening. So I think having that information could inform the, the vote. So I do think that that's, that's how it's going to go down. And people will be really interested to, I'm really glad it's on the agenda and that we're talking about it now. I think that was very wise to get that out in front and get some information out to people because and there's not a lot of people in here tonight, but there's a lot of people on, probably on YouTube and, and on Zoom watching and they can, they can understand kind of what, why we're doing all this stuff, why we're thinking about these issues, why we have to spend so much money on these things. It's not that we want to spend the city's money. It's that we're doing what's prudent as, you know, as a city and as representatives of the city. So I'm, I'm in favor of the recommendations. Yes.
Yeah. Could I add? So that there's no doubt in anyone's mind about what we're doing tonight. The, the only, as I said, this is the first step, but, but what do I mean by that? All you are being asked to do tonight is to authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposal, to hire a demographer, to, to study the city and to return with a report. You are not making the decision of whether or not you're switching from at-large to districts. You're not making the decision of what those districts would look like. And so that needs to be made clear. Those decisions will be made at a future date. And as I've now said a few times, and I'll reaffirm it, there will be significant public participation at each stage of this process.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I completely understand that. That's why my, I, I agree with the recommendations.
Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I, when we spoke about this back in September of 2022, I made it clear that I was, I would never be interested in litigating a claim. And the facts of the matter is, the facts of matter are, and it's very frustrating for the public, I can understand that, is that the CVRA doesn't give us any choice. And that's, that's hard, that's hard, that's a hard pill to swallow. They've got the gun, they've got the bullets and, and we have nothing really, other than a potential willingness to spend millions of dollars to litigate a claim that no one else has ever been successful doing. And I think that's just a fool's errand. So I would never support that. We, we spoke about that previously. As has been mentioned, the first step is to get the data, hire the demographer. I think it's going to be very interesting, but I don't think anyone should expect an outcome that wouldn't result in one district being created that had a higher baseline of a protected class than the average citywide. So I think it's kind of fait accompli that there will be a district that could be found that could potentially offer more voting power for a protected class. Now, that does not compel an outcome of the election, as we've discussed in the, in the, in the PG Unified School District case, but CVRA doesn't care about that. That's not part of the process. So the first step of the process is certainly to hire the demographer. I do agree that then we should consider going to a reduce council size from six members to four council members. And that's for a later discussion. I found kind of compelling, though, the case that the city attorney mentioned out of Palmdale, where the court ruled that even though Palmdale and their charter explicitly stated that they, that their council members would be elected at large, the court didn't require them to go out for a vote on that. So if we make a finding that we are going to go to district elections based on basically establishing a district with a protected class, then I, I don't know if it would be necessary to go out. And I'm kind of backtracking on that. I think it's a kind of a live legal issue. And I think as, as the city attorney has mentioned, there isn't a specific case that compelled a jurisdiction to go out for a vote prior to proceeding. I think the Palmdale case kind of leaves me believing that that would be the outcome. So maybe you could speak to that.
Well, in the Palmdale case, there was a trial and there was a decision by the court that the city was in violation of the CVRA. And that the city had to move to districts, notwithstanding a charter that said that they were an at-large city. So that's not what we have here in Pacific Grove. What you have, you don't have a court judgment that you're in violation of the CVRA. All you have right now is a letter from LULAC. And there hasn't been a trial. There hasn't been a finding that you're in violation of the CVRA. So we are not in the situation that Palmdale is in. As I indicated in the presentation, there are different cities that have treated the, the issue of the there are different cities that have treated the, the issue of the let me turn to it, of what to do with the charter. So the city of, to go back, the, the city of Sunnyvale, they transitioned to districts and they had a charter amendment. In Santa Rosa, it's my understanding that they proceeded to districts without seeking an amendment of their charter. And then there's the Palmdale case. There, there are no cases, there's an absence of direction from the courts, if you will, on the issue of whether a city that has a charter that requires at-large voting can transition to districts without a charter amendment vote. So my, my advice currently is that we proceed with this process in the by taking the first step first and addressing this issue about the charter amendment as we go through the process. It may include having the ordinance. Remember, I told you that the maps have to be adopted by the ordinance. You could have a provision in the ordinance which says that the ordinance will become effective upon approval by the voters of an amendment to the charter allowing for districts. And that way, after the ordinance is adopted, it goes to the voters for approval of the charter amendment. And then we would have to deal with the issue of, well, what happens if it's not approved by the voters? And that's an open question. But rather than to cause confusion now as to what that result may or may not be, there may be you know, some court cases that are decided between now and by the time we get to that, that point, or maybe additional legislation. All I know is what the cards are that we've been dealt today. And so we need to evaluate based on known facts and known law. And based on that, the advice that you received tonight from, from me is to authorize the city manager to issue an RFP to hire a demographer. We'll talk about the rest at a later date.
Well, yeah, just to follow up on that, Mayor, I, 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 I hear what you're saying. I just think it's a very interesting question that if we're going to make a finding to go to districts based on a presumed racial polarization that would result in the dilution of a protected class, then I just think it could be an interesting question. The charter can't prevent or can't preempt the CVRA. So it's just, it's a question for later, obviously. But I just, in thinking about this some more, especially your mention of the Palmdale case, because I think that's kind of what was happening there. It's going to be an interesting discussion.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Barrett, for a great presentation on this. And I think if we suddenly start talking about six to four districts, that's kind of, that's way down the road. And I think Mr. Sandoval with CVRA would raise a red flag if something was that to happen. But I totally agree that the city manager here be given the opportunity to hire a demographic person. That's the first step.
My assumption would be that the, if you take the action you have tonight, let me make sure that I wrote it this way in the agenda report, will be that you would authorize the city manager to issue the RFP to select the a demographer, and then also to return to the city council with the demographer's report. So and at that point, you would then have the opportunity to have further discussion about the demographer's findings and all of these other issues that we have been talking about tonight. I think we kind of just put those in the parking lot for now. It's not that we're going to ignore them. It's just, I think we should take it, as I've said a few times now, take it one step at a time.
Councilmember Pudori.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say, enthralling presentation. The, I think the, let me just start with the sixty-four because there's, talk about the sixty-four. My, my, my recollection is that the reason why we went to sixty-four in November twenty twenty-two is to actually be like a response to what the LULAC presented in August twenty twenty-two, which is this district thing. So we were going to take a decision to say, how is this voting going to affect the cause of this? So that is my recollection. So I think we're kind of like reinventing the wheel again by going to a failed cause, which, which has already run through the system. Anyway, that, that topic aside, I wanted to actually ask the, the question that councilman back raised, which is the district has already done some, like, demographer, they've hired a demographer, they've, they've done some, they've done a lot of work, in fact. Can we ride on those rails to accomplish what we're doing here?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think I can probably answer that question. What you're talking about is that the, the school district completed a similar process. Obviously had to hire a demographer and, and can we and can we use that demographer in, in order to move forward with the process? I think what we do is what I would do with a direction to proceed with the RFP, I would certainly contact the school district and find out what demographer they used and how comfortable they felt, were they pleased with the results? And then I would certainly include them amongst the list that we go out for competitive review. That way you have the opportunity, if you've got somebody with local experience, that certainly would be weighed. But there are other factors that you need to consider too, in terms of timing of the completion of the work and and the actual cost itself. So those are, but, but it's a good point to reach out to the school district and see if we can't somehow incorporate what they've done in the past.
Yes, if you could package that into our motion here, I would appreciate that. The, the other thing is, from a, from a Mr. Sandoval standpoint, he sent a letter, it's been like two plus years or somewhere there. When does that letter, like, get officially closed out from a city side? Is, is whatever action we're taking finishes the, the process? Or when does that process actually end?
Well, the history on this is that the letter was received, the, there were a few, at least two pending matters when it was received that influenced how to proceed. One of them was the City of Santa Monica case that I mentioned. And the other was the proposal to reduce the number of council from six to four. So that decision was made in November of twenty-two, but the Santa Monica case was still outstanding. Santa Monica case was just decided a few months ago, during this last summer. So now what we are doing is taking into account the letter from Mr. Sandoval. We are taking action, if that's what you choose to do, which is hire a demographer. And that information will be provided to Mr. Sandoval to indicate to him that we are reviewing this matter and we're taking action. Obviously, you're not, as I said, committing tonight to what decision you're going to make eventually. All you're doing is gathering information, and that's what I'll communicate to him.
Thank you. And I understand there are some financial implications here with respect to the letter itself, where money has to go from one, one side to the other. When does that actually take place?
When does what take?
So my, my understanding is that the reason, the, one of the reasons for filing this is because the attorneys that filed this or the organization that filed this gets to receive a certain amount as well.
Well, some of these answers are ones I'd prefer not to give in a public setting. So let me just say to you that I've described how, you know, the process has occurred to date and how we intend to, how I believe you intend to move forward.
Okay. Yeah, it's, so, I mean, it's, this has been, we've been discussing this a lot, but it's unfortunate, though, the way that it's really stacked against the city as to how this matter is going. And so I'm supportive of the recommended action as it is with, with whatever we can do with the school district. Thank you.
It sounds like council supports taking the first step in our journey together down this road. The, the recommended action is to direct the city manager to issue an RFP and then direct the city manager to come back. There is obviously the hiring process for, for the selection and hiring of the demographer. So I'm assuming that the cost will be within the city manager's expenditure authority?
Well, if the cost is within the city manager's authority, then yes, the city manager would have the authority to sign the contract. If the cost is going to exceed the city manager's authority, then there would be a need to return to council. Just because it's within the city manager's authority, however, does not mean that it couldn't come back to council. So I guess I should seek that clarification. Do you want to see the contract with the demographer regardless of the amount?
And I'm wondering about the I, I'd like to see this proceed as reasonably quickly as possible. So I'm, I'm concerned about the time it will take, the delay that's involved with
So you, you meet every two
Bringing it back.
You, you meet twice a month, so it's not like months would go by. You know, if, if we got the proposal the day, the day after a council meeting, it would only be thirteen days until your next council meeting. So I don't know that bringing it back to, if you want to see it, if it's under forty, you could, you could give that direction. That's all I'm saying. And I don't think that the thirteen days or less is going to make a difference in the big scheme of things.
Well, I'll, I'll just weigh in. I, I have trust in our city manager and staff to, to select the, the, the best demographer, but I'm open to hear other people's thoughts. Do you want this to come back?
Councilmember Clady.
I think a good indication of how much it's going to cost is how much the school district paid. It's likely more than forty thousand or whatever the current. So it's probably gonna have to come back anyway.
Do you want it to come back regardless of the amount? That, I guess, that's the question.
Any further thoughts?
If it's below forty, then I'm okay with the city manager selecting.
Same thing here, but I believe it's going to be over.
Yeah, okay. And I'm also, I'm sorry, I'm sort of nitpicking at the last minute. I think we just need to direct the city manager to do the RFP.
Well, my advice would be if there's going to be a motion anytime soon, is to just move the recommended action. There's, there's two items. One is to hire the demographer, issue the RFP to hire the demographer, and secondly, to return to the council with a report.
All right. Let's hear a motion.
Move recommended actions, one and two, please.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Is that close enough to eight o'clock for you?
Wow. Are we good or what? I thank you. We're about to go into closed session on item fifteen A. That's a public employment city manager. This is discussing a recruiting effort. Thank you very much to the public for your participation, for staff. My colleagues will see you upstairs. Meet, open session.
Public comment to ask to the closed session.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Public comment? Please come to the podium. Not virtual? Right, right now? Uh, no, this is the next, for the next item. All right. Do we have, do we have any virtual public comment?
No virtual public comment.
Okay, I don't want them. All right, I'm let's see, we're not really adjourning the meeting. We're, we're adjourning to closed session. And we'll adjourn the meeting after the closed session has ended. Have a good evening, everyone.